All right, I'd like to call this February 6th, 2014 Cookville City Council Meeting to Order. Could we have a roll call, please?
Councilman Anderson?
Present.
Councilman Woodford?
Present.
Mayor Swallows?
Here.
Vice Mayor Epp?
Here.
Councilman Albright?
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Would everyone please stand for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. All right. Item one, consider approval of agenda as presented. Do we have any additions or subtractions from the agenda?
No change.
Motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
All vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Okay. Item two, consider approval of minutes of council meeting held on January 16th, 2014. Questions, comments about the minutes?
None.
Motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
All vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Okay, on to the consent agenda. Item three, set a date, March 6th, 2014, for a public hearing on ordinance 140201, rezoning 20 South Whitney Avenue, from CL Local Commercial to CG General Commercial. And item four, set a date, March the 6th, 2014, for a public hearing on ordinance 140202, amendment to the zoning code, excuse me, relating to approval of property owners' requirements for establishment of HS District Overlay Zoning. A motion for approval of consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Questions, discussion? Seeing none, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
All right. On to new business. Item five, consider resolution R140203 honoring Larry Self at his retirement. Read the resolution. I assume that's what most people are here for. Whereas with servants' hearts Larry and Betty Self have provided assistance to those in need in our community and the region for 38 years, and whereas along with UL Wilson Larry and Betty were an integral part of addressing a need and opening the Cookville Rescue Mission in March of 1976. And whereas under Larry's direction, the mission recruited a board of directors in 1982 and moved to their current location on South Jefferson Avenue and with support from the community through fundraisers, were able to pay for the purchase of the property in 1985. And whereas Larry's vision of helping others continued as the mission's outreach and programs grew all around them, adding the Lighthouse Family Lodge, a dental clinic, and the Step Upward Farm while continuing to have services and devotionals at the mission chapel. And whereas Larry and Betty continue to bring awareness to the cause of homelessness by recognizing and participating in National Homeless and Hunger Week, Mission Awareness Week, serving on advisory councils and networking with local organizations and churches to provide services in the community as well as our region, mentoring rescue missions in surrounding counties, and missionary work abroad including Souls for Souls. And whereas Larry will be passing the torch to a new director, but he and Betty will remain familiar faces at the mission, continuing weekly services at Marsh Chapel, a weekly radio broadcast, and staying engaged with the dental clinic in residence. And whereas as Larry Self retires from his position as director at the Cookville Rescue Mission, he should do so knowing the positive impact he has had on the community and all that have benefited from the assistance the mission provides. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of Cookville that on behalf of the citizens of the city of Cookville, sincere congratulations and appreciation are hereby extended to Larry Self for his achievement and service to the Cookville and well wishes at his retirement. Now therefore be it resolved that this resolution shall be duly recorded and filed in the city clerk's office adopted this 6th day of February 2014. I think everybody needs to stand for a round of applause. We actually have a framed copy up here. We'd like for you to come forward. If that's all right. Come forward for us. And we want you to picture, I believe.
I'm sorry everybody's not dressed formal. I'm leaving.
I wanted to point out, we had several board members in attendance. Did you guys start in '82 as well? But Mr. Self, feel free to come up and say anything you'd like. We do appreciate your service and appreciate everything you've done for this community. At the podium? That way you can get on the microphone.
I tell you, people get worried when they get behind the podium and think I'm gonna take up an offering. We do, I've said this before and I'm happy to say it again, they might be as good a community on the face of God's earth as Cookville, Tennessee, but we won't find a better one. We've been, seriously, to God be the glory, but I'm telling you, God uses people. And many of you in this room has been used greatly. And got some, a lot of good buddies up there and we appreciate them. And we'll still be around, we're gonna be doing the pastoral work. Our new director, Kim In, would you stand? It's Kim's up. What we've been saying, we've been busy, a lot of different supporting churches kind of passing the torch, and what we've been saying is, in 38 years, we've got a real good solid foundation built, and we've got a certain level. We feel like it's time to go to another level. And after much, recruiting Kim for the new director was not an overnight thing. I recommended to the board and the board, they interviewed, re-interviewed, double-interviewed, didn't you? But it was a good thing. And she is bringing some new programs to the ministry. And what it is, it's in addition to, not instead of, the gospel. She's a very strong Christian. We have, the word of God's still going out, singing. We don't have singing, we have sangans. Singing's still going on, radio program. And let me repeat myself again. The different things, she's making some good changes. Change is not always pleasant sometimes, but it's good. And they reemphasize, it's in addition to, not instead of, the gospel. And I appreciate Mr. Mayor and you folks taking time out to do this for us. And God bless you, and we'll still be around, hopefully be for a few more years. Thank you. God bless you.
Thank you, Mr. Self.
Hey Larry, we gotta get down to business, but I just really wanna just say a couple words, because I've been watching you, I've been watching you and your organization and watching you and the rescue mission for a number of years. And I'm very proud, I'm very proud to be able to be up here and officially with the mayor and my other council members, say thank you. Appreciate you for a couple reasons, a number of reasons. One, I like your name. It's a, you don't see a whole lot of Larrys anymore, and I just, your namesake is, I think that's wonderful, I like that. What Larry, I was thinking about you, you know, there's people that can choose to put their time in, invest their time in many, many things, in, you know, in their work, investing, their kids. You've chose to invest in something that most people would choose not to. And I appreciate that very much. And the only thing I can think of is that you've been, your investments have been building treasures in heaven. And this community, and I wanna say thank you very much for that, Larry. Thank you very much.
I'm gonna say for 38 years, you have a lot of dedication and passion for what you do, and you're leaving a great legacy. Thank you.
About 10 years ago, my youth group came to your mission and made a meal, and we attended your service. And those young people now are 26, 27, 28 years old. And when they come back to Cookville and see me at church, they always bring that up. And that tells you that your mission was many fingered. I mean, it went from one place to the other. And you may have been serving folks that were homeless, but you also served a group of very privileged young people. And I appreciate all the work you've done. Thank you.
It shows you don't know where it's gonna impact.
No, you don't know where the impact is.
We moved here in 1976, the same year that you opened the mission, and have heard about it the whole time we have lived in Cookville. And I can honestly say that I appreciate and applaud you for the way that you built the mission and all the hard work and dedication that you put into it. And thank you.
You guys truly have made Cookville a better place, just by your hard work and your presence. One thing I wanted to point out, I know you're proud of, because we've talked about it before, is the mission does not take money from any government agency, do you? You raise it all, which is another, should be another feather in your cap. Most people ask for money, but you guys would get the bell ringers out there and raise money any way you can, and that's to be commended as well, so.
Our new director's just played a Duke same.
But thank you, again.
Mr. Redder's his action item?
Yes.
Oh yeah.
Motion for approval?
It's so moved.
Second.
Anything else? All vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you. All right. Item six, consider resolution 140204 approving the use by Cookville Regional Medical Center authority of proceeds of its $30 million revenue build America Bonds Series 2010 for certain projects. Sponsors, CRMC, CEO Paul Korth.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Tonight, the Hospital Board of Trustees asking for approval and your consideration of, a previous bond issue was issued back in December of 2010. Those bond proceeds were to finance construction, installation of, and equipping several different projects that we had going on at the time. We had the expansion in the labor and delivery room, we had six new observation rooms, we had six new ORs being built, we had an electrophysiology lab that was being built, and also the equipment that funded that project, the equipment that went along with that project. We had borrowed $30 million and we didn't use all those funds, so we are requesting to use $7 million of those bond proceeds that were not spent to be used now on the pharmacy project that was, been previously approved, along with the central sterile department in the old pharmacy, before both the renovation and the acquisition of equipment that's associated with that. This is not any new bond issue money, this is just money that's left over from previous bond issues that has to have a resolution to be used on these new projects.
Thank you, Mr. Korth.
Be glad to answer any questions.
I wanted to point out that, you know, the headline sounds 30 million, but this is, these were projects that we've had in the past that came in under budget.
Correct.
We didn't focus on under budget.
Correct.
So we had money left over.
Right.
And because they are bond funds, they have to be allocated specifically, and if we don't do that, then they're just gonna have to sit there.
Correct. Until another project comes up.
So we just have to reallocate how we use them, so everybody understands.
Right.
So we had projects that came in under budget. I always like to point that out. So this is a good thing. So anyway, do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments? Everybody vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Council. Thank you, Mr. Korth.
When you hear $30 million, you like to try to explain it best you can. Not that you didn't do a good job. Item seven, consider appointment to the Architectural Design Review Board. Sponsors, Mr. James Mills.
Mayor and Councilmembers, Randy Dalton is previously on the Planning Commission and served as a representative on the Architectural Design Review Board. He has resigned from the Planning Commission. Were required to have a representative. Chris Whitefield's volunteered, and we would recommend you appoint him to serve as the Planning Commission representative on the Architectural Design Review Board.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments?
Chris is a good choice. He's very active on the Planning Commission. He's very dedicated and has a passion for it. He's a very good choice.
We're always grateful for people who are willing to volunteer their time to help the city with these projects.
All vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
I do.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Item eight, consider declaring a surplus miscellaneous equipment from the police department. Sponsors, Chief Randy Evans.
Mayor and Council, as you can see by the list here, we've got several items that are unserviceable and would ask that the council vote and declare those surplus. Be glad to answer any questions you have. The computers that you see there may not have been on the original list, but those are the computers that we replaced a couple of months ago when we purchased the computers from the drug fund.
We are removing the hard drives from those computers, correct? Or cleaning them out?
I believe they are cleaned, and I think they, I think actually the plan is to probably put those on gov deals once they're cleaned. And I think they already have been, and actually sell those.
Great question.
Thank you, Chief Evans. Motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments? Seeing none, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
All right. Onto item nine, consider approval to rebuild the 1993 Action Target Firing Range System. Sponsors, Police Department Chief Randy Evans.
Mayor and Council, we solicited a quote from Action Targets. They are the original manufacturer of our target system. As you can see up there, we purchased this target system back in 1993, late in 93, and it was actually installed in the spring of 94. So it's right at 20 years old. It's a 20-station pneumatic turning target system. The model is actually called a Deluxe 9, as I stated earlier. Action Targets is the original manufacturer and the sole source for parts. We did actually solicit some comparable quotes, and to buy a comparable system to this from another company will cost about $9,000 to $10,000 extra, or more than it will be to upgrade or repair and rebuild this system. I did call, and I had this question from Councilman Woodford about the install or the repair date, and they said a minimum of 45 days and probably close to 60. That they actually would have to, may possibly build some of the parts for the system, and they build those in their own factory. The total cost is $21,227.74. Next slide. These are some of the items that they're gonna rebuild and replace. Obviously, this is actually just the guts of that system. A lot of wiring, a lot of airlines, a lot of actuators and valves and those kind of things, and interface boards, and then of course the labor on it's quite expensive as well. And it also includes installation and the shipping. I'd recommend your approval.
Thank you, Chief. Motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments?
You're at a temporary firing range right now, aren't you?
We are. We're actually using a temporary facility that we, I guess lease, for lack of a better term, by the use up on Buck Mountain.
Okay. So what kind of target, is this target, the old target system up there, you're making?
No, it's not. No, no, it's just a stationary target stand.
Target stand, okay.
Do you anticipate another 20 years out of this, once you get it repaired?
Well, I really don't know. I don't know that we can anticipate it.
Just a couple of questions, Chief Evans. I mean, of course, unfortunately I missed your presentation, so I might be asking questions that's redundant to the other council members.
Yes, sir.
But one of the things that stuck out was just the one-year warranty. Was that, is that an industry standard for all these, for the labor and parts and et cetera? Because it seemed to me like it was, that warranty was pretty short. I was just curious what your thoughts were on that.
You know, I really don't know. Obviously, I saw that in the quote, but I did not check that against any other manufacturer. So, I mean, I can certainly find the answer to that, but I...
Well, it would just be great if we could get a little bit, of course, you know, if you've ever replaced, if you've put new equipment into old equipment and stuff, that does present, does diminish the warranty somewhat, but it would be great if that warranty could be a little better. I didn't know if that was industry standard, so I'd appreciate if you could check in that a little bit. And I guess the other thing too, as Councilman Woodford kinda touched on to this, of course, we're kinda trying to figure out a new permanent range. Will this be able to dovetail into that?
Yeah, the actual target stands in the system is currently in our range.
Okay.
That we're currently improving and renovating. So this system is never left there. It is there, it's literally bolted down.
Okay.
And what you will actually end up with is actually the shell. The target stands, the target clamps, so to speak, or the frames, the conduits and all that stuff, it's all the basic infrastructure is there. So what we're basically doing is literally gutting that out.
Okay.
All the wiring, all the airlines, all the actuators that actually turn the targets themselves.
Okay.
All that's being replaced, brand new.
Now Chief, you said this is repair, rebuild, it's not brand new?
Well...
Well, the parts are...
The parts are, yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
But I'm thinking if the whole system was all new, I think the warranty would be longer, since it's a rebuild, remodel with new parts, I'd say you won't get a warranty longer.
But the parts that we're not replacing are just metal.
Right.
I mean, they are literally just the frame of the system. So all the functioning, moving parts is what we're replacing.
Anything else? All vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Chief Evans. Item 10, consider awarding bid for semi-annual paving, asphalt mix, and mineral aggregate. Public Works is sponsor, Mr. Greg Brown.
Mayor and Council, we recently advertised and opened bids for paving and mineral aggregate. The low bid for the paving, for everything, but the coal mix was highly incorporated. You see the prices on the screen. For aggregate, we had one bid from Rogers Group. We recommend acceptance of both bids.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Do I have a motion for approval?
Yes, so moved. Yes, you have a motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Any questions, comments?
Just, Greg, for the last item, for the Rogers Group, there was no other bids. Is there any reason behind that, or is it just because Rogers is just down the road and no one wanted even?
No, there's another company here, and they just, we advertised, usually we call to remind them, but we didn't, for whatever reason, we didn't call them this time, but either one, Rogers or the other company. And Rogers was the only one that bid. It was advertised in the paper.
And despite that fact, you still feel comfortable with that bid, that it's within...
The prices are virtually the same as they were the last bid.
Okay. That's why I'm over here. Thank you.
I got a question. Is there a shortage in 3-inch rock?
They just don't make it.
Okay.
They just don't make it.
Just curious. Nobody bid on it, so. All right, anything else?
We can give you a 2 in 1 inch.
All vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Item 11, consider awarding bid for personal protective equipment, turnout gear. Sponsor is Chief Roger Fuquay, Fire Department.
Mayor and Council, we received three bids for 11 sets of turnout gear. I recommend Navco of $18,920 as low bid meeting specs.
Thank you, Chief. Motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments? Seeing none, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Item 12, consider approval of emergency repair to a raw water pump at the water treatment plant. Sponsor is Water Quality Control Department, Mr. Ronnie Kelly.
Mayor and Council, our water intake, which is located, the picture up there, is located down on Center Hill Lake. We recently had a pump issue down there that our guys looked at for two or three days and never could figure out exactly what the problem was. It was, we thought it was unusual. We contacted a local company here that we've had work, come down and do work and pump work in the past. They came down and looked at it and verified, yeah, you do have a problem. But they, and the pump is too big for them to take out and pull out. The pump, it's about 85, I think it's about 85 feet long shafts, and they're in five-foot sections, and they have five stages of impellers on them. So it's a, and those individual shafts are about five feet, so they're put together with couplings. And so it's a job to pull it out, you have to have a crane and everything. They are not capable of doing it. So we had contacted John Bouchard Company, is a company out of Nashville that has rebuilt some of our pumps in the past, and asked them to come up and take a look. They verified that you do have a problem, we can't determine what it is, but you are gonna have to pull the pump. So we had it pulled, and when we got it out, we found PEX piping was wrapped into the impellers, which seized the pump up. It, it, gee, didn't lock it up.
It seized the pump.
Yeah, seized the pump.
Pump was seized.
And when it did, those couplings on those individual shafts sort of welded together. So they had to cut each one of those loose, and here's the bottom with the screen taken off. You can just see how it wrapped up in there. So they've had to take all that apart, take it back to Nashville, re-straighten all the shafts, and get it all put back together. Once we realized that it was PEX tubing, we don't use that type tubing, and thought it was probably some tubing that may have been left over from a contract when we had done in 2008, 2009, where we had all that redone, we turned it into the insurance company. The insurance company has authorized, or they've already sent us a check for $20,655.92. The total bill, repair bill, is $45,655.92. We have a deductible of $25,000. And so we've, they've authorized the payment to us, and now we need to pay the bill as soon as they get the pump installed. So that's my request tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments?
How does, with that pump being down, how does that affect...
Well, we have three other pumps.
Okay, so...
And there are seven and a half million gallon pumps each. So we have the capability, but we need to get it back in service.
Sure.
Have you had anything like this happen before?
Not like this. I mean, we've had pumps go down and go out. I mean, it's, we budget so much money every year, some years you'll have an issue. It's sort of rare, it's not too rare, but to pull it, have to pull the whole mechanism out, is sort of rare.
Yeah, it's wrapped up. Where at the tubing? You said from a previous construction project, you guys probably talked about this last in the work session, but, I mean, I'm assuming this comes in from an intake, where did this come from?
Well, here's what we think. Because all the screens that water, pulls water from the lake, all that was redone. The whole intake structure was cleaned out.
Right.
And this is the size tubing that was used in the pump installation. So the best of our gas, it was kicked down the hole and fell down in there, and nobody went and got it. And so it floated around down in there for every how long, and it finally worked its way in there. And it may have cut some of the capacity. They said they had noticed some of the capacity, it wasn't pumping as high capacity as the others, and then all of a sudden it just locked, so.
Seized.
Seized. It was seized.
So that's why we turned it into insurance, and we have $25,000 deductible, and asked the insurance company to take it from there and do... the insurance company to take it from there and do what they need to do with it.
I appreciate our water. Thank you.
Blessing.
Blessing, yes, everything.
All right, anything else? All right, all vote.
Thank you.
Obvious votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. All right, this is the portion of the program where we turn over the floor to anyone that's here that would like to come up and speak, which asks that you come to the podium, state your name and address, and keep it to three minutes if you can. Mayor, I do think we have some Boy Scouts. We do.
I think we do.
Members, Boy Scout Troop 196, all right, thanks for coming. Hope you learned something tonight.
Can we say something?
Yes, sir, please.
I'm Jimmy Loretto, and this is 196. We just appreciate you guys letting us come into this council meeting. It helps us get our eagle. It advances us greatly on two requirements, two of the members. We just thank you guys and live it up.
Thank you.
I appreciate the Boy Scouts and as a public educator, I can tell the students that I have that are members of the scouting community, and I really appreciate that. This government stuff, you're gonna have to know in the eighth grade and again in the 11th grade, so get it down. Thank you for coming tonight.
Maybe we'll see one of you guys up here, a few years from now. Maybe we'll see you up here one of these, one of these two years from now. You'll be 18 soon.
And our door is always open, so come to any and every meeting. We have work sessions on Monday afternoon before our Thursday meetings, they're open as well. You know, we're open, city hall's open every day, if you have questions or wanna learn anymore, feel free, come by. You also probably learn a lot from the man that was sitting behind you, that left earlier, Larry Self, the director of Rescue Mission, that might help with badges too.
I'd like to thank Mr. Kelly and his staff at the Water Department. We had a meeting Tuesday night, we're having to address putting sewer south of town, affects about, what, 175 homes? We had an open meeting in October explaining what we're gonna do, heard their comments. We have absorbed that, made some changes to it and readdressed it, and you did a great presentation. People understood and saw that we listened to their concerns and it was just very well received. It was a much different audience this week than it was in October. They seem a lot more pleased with what we're gonna do. And I appreciate your staff and the work and effort that went into that. Thank you.
You also need to thank Carrie Vaughn, an engineer on your staff, for the good presentation that she did. She was very professional. The people that were sitting around me were, understood what was going on, no problems at all, it was a good, it was a good meeting.
I've got one thing I wanna bring up, whenever we have, whenever we get some good, positive feedback about any of our employees, we try to make it public as much as we can. We got a letter, Mr. Ronnie Kelly got this, about Kyle Anderson. And just, of course, it's really cold outside and it's been freezing temperatures for a lot this winter. And pipes freeze, things still happen, and things still have to be fixed, even if it's zero degrees. So on the evening of January 15th, we had some, some citizens had a serious water leak at their water meter in the front yard. They called after hours and Kyle Anderson came to do the repairs. He did an extremely good job under extremely difficult circumstances. It was below freezing and there was significant water. He had to dig fairly deep with a shovel to reach the leak and repair it. He did an outstanding job and he is an excellent ambassador for the city of Cookeville. I definitely think that he deserves an accommodation in his file for a job well done. And Mr. Kelly, I apologize, I didn't tell you this in advance, but I had this on my desk this week to bring and it was under some papers, so I didn't have a chance to call you to ask for, to let him know. So, but, so Mr. Kyle Anderson did an excellent job and represented the city well, just like, just like all of our employees do. They make our job easy and make us very proud, so I wanted to tell him thank you.
Anything else? This meeting's adjourned.